That was the old boundary.
Any women in Waxahau?
Well, they have energy efficient programs in this building.
Waxahau.
Had to do audit. Help the freight office put in different lighting. This light.
Did they tell you I went off roading with the town jeep with the other?
Yeah.
Nice.
New Wellington head.
When it was built.
If somebody. Well, I, I took, I went down Goldsboro to great. And then, then I went over to, uh. That's when I, that's when it told, I says it'll take over from here.
Let me just see if I get a response back from her. There he is. All right, I'd like to call to order, uh, the Board of Commissioners work session for September twenty-six, twenty-seventeen. We have four items on the agenda and I'll entertain a motion to adopt that agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First up, Dina, parks and rec fees.
Hello, thank you. Um, this afternoon I would like to, um, present to y'all a request of restructuring our park fees. Been in the position for a couple months now and understanding, um, that the fees were, uh, a blanket of items that were put together over the past couple years. Um, they're a little outdated. And so I'm requesting to basically clean up the structure and have a more unified way of, um, doing our park fees for rentals and for fields. And, um, so that's what I'm presenting tonight. So you see on the left side, um, that's all the fees that we have right now. And I'm requesting to clean those up and to unify a lot of those fees, basically taking the average and, um, just making it easier for staff and for citizens to understand. Um, when I came into the position, there was six different, uh, sheets with fees on them and it was a little confusing. So this way we, um, cleaned it up and just make it easier for us to, to move forward.
Well, I want to thank you for thinking that we have, we've got such great vision that we can see what's on the left. So I really do appreciate that compliment. Uh, this is a work session, so, uh, anybody have questions? My only question that I had is I, I went after seeing your, uh, proposed totally anecdotal, it wasn't scientific, but I started searching towns. I did not see a lot of, uh, towns that, in fact, I didn't see any that had, that made the distinction of for profit. Certainly residential, non-residential, residential business, non-residential business, but I didn't see the, that distinction in, in too many towns.
Um.
Can you explain a little bit more?
Sure.
What you're thinking there?
Um, in my previous town, we actually didn't, uh, allow for profit to rent. And a lot of the towns do not allow for profit to rent, um, because using a, a government entity for profit. Um, this was something that was already, um, the town of Waxahau was already doing this already, so I just made that allowance into the restructuring.
Do we have any idea if the for-profits are, are actually renting?
There are. The meeting place gets a, a lot of action.
Have the other questions, comments?
I do have a question. How, uh, so on the current fee structure, how often, I mean, what is, are we collecting a large amount on these fees?
Like I said, the, the meeting place is the most rented out facility that we have. Um, the other, so I took the average mainly off of that one and made it into our hourly rate. Um, the until when we start building our parks, um, that, that fee structure can blend into those future parks. Um, that will help us generate some revenue. So our revenue right now is small, um, so restructuring it really is not impacting it. Other than just making it easier for staff and citizens to understand what their amount to pay is.
My other comment is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I know there's a few nonprofits that are using it for free at this current time. Do they be, are they aware of we're possibly going to go up and they're going to be charged a rate?
Um, in our current, uh, setup, that was kind of grandfathered in. There is a rate for nonprofit and profit, um, so they were never charged. So my suggestion would give them a three to six months heads up, saying that this is about to, so everybody's on the same page. And then start the, um, the, the new fees for them.
Don't be alarmed, they're going through some SWAT training upstairs and.
I'm sorry.
You had to cage the dog a little while ago because it was barking. Um, Commissioner Stewart?
Um, did you, when you compared the, um, rates, the old rates to the new rates, how, how did you come up with the increase? Was that an average of other towns?
It's actually a decrease.
Oh, is it a decrease?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was an increase.
Um, for the average for an area rate is actually a dollar decrease.
A what?
A dollar decrease.
So how did you come up with that, to decrease it?
Um, to, to unify from the meeting place all the way to a field space and looking at other municipalities and making that average of what's comparable for the area. So the resident is going to benefit, the non-resident is actually going to pay a little bit more.
Also, when you talk about field space, um, we currently have a, a contract with WAA. How will that come into play?
It's the same. Um, the, that contract's not going to change on that part. Basically, they get the first right to the fields because, with our contract. And I still would have to go through them to see what's open for a citizen to rent it.
They would then be paying the same rental fees?
The WAA?
Right.
With our contract is different.
Okay, so they won't fall under that structure?
No, no sir.
No questions. So I realize this is just a transition and then we'll get to a new fee structure next year. Couple things that I'd encourage you to look at between now and the next budget cycle is, um, I think the difference between resident and non-resident is, is trivial. Like, when you, when you look at our meeting house value and everybody around us meeting house value, I mean, they're double the size and, and basically we're giving our field away for, for, it's actually almost less than some of the surrounding parks, so we might be encouraging people to leave their municipality to come here and just, just look at that and, and make it where our residents, our citizens are, are, are come first on that, if you would, and just come back to us on that. The other thing that I think, uh, would be interesting to look at and, and feel out is, um, and other municipalities do, and an operational use fee like running an event, renting the gravel lot for the Ginger Snap is a heck of a lot different than renting the gravel lot to, um, have music there or, or just a storytelling hour. And a lot of municipalities actually do look at the overall, if you're, you're doing a bigger event, there is a bigger impact on the use of the fee in totality. And so that's something that could be looked at for next year, obviously. Not for now, but, um, so is the idea that you would bring these forward, um, at a future meeting to just clean these up and just, you know, given that there's no objections?
It's, my, my goal was to, to see if you're open to it and if, if you have suggestions, then come back to Ashley, ask for it to be restructured.
Is everybody comfortable with it being restructured? And then look for whatever for the, for the next budget cycle, take the time to look, look at? Major changes.
I have a question now. Well, you brought it up, uh, you're talking about comparing the different, uh, media things happening. I mean, Ginger Snap versus, I mean, you, you charge a twenty-five dollars per hour per staff member on here. Uh, do, do you have a, you know, a big event versus small event? Do you have a number that you put out for anticipated people that are coming to that?
Um, no sir, it's basically with any event, you have the same tools to make the event happen.
Right.
So they would, if a smaller event needed barricades or a staff member, it's still, they need those things as, as well as a, a large event. So it's still would have to pay those extra.
But the Ginger Snap, they go out on the road and mark where, where they're being, but that's all handled by the, the event people that are doing the renting? Or does staff do some of that?
Um, staff has in the past helped with their barricades and I know that PD has helped with, um, officers.
So you determine how many staff are going to be needed for a particular event?
We would assess the staff needs and then charge them accordingly.
And then extend to that, uh, fire department, they're not a town entity. Do we bill for them and reimburse them as part of that? If like Ginger Snap, they, they bring, last one you had five or six firefighters there. Do they, do their costs go into that or, or not? Is that, we cover for them, I guess is what I'm asking, as we do the agreements.
I don't know.
Currently, I don't think that's the situation. So that's something, we're kind of assessing the event structure and the number of events.
Okay.
And how those costs are either reimbursed or, or not reimbursed.
Okay.
So that's something that we'll definitely want to look at for the, the next budget year.
Okay, good. Do you have a question?
I was just going to suggest, I was going to suggest since all of us are kind of in agreement is just to bring it forward on the next consent agenda for us to vote on it.
None of this covers safety, the police or anything else that, that's not, not.
This is just rental fees.
Simplifying the rental fee. And would this come as a budget amendment or a fee?
It's not, it's just a amendment to the fee schedule.
Okay.
And you, you do not have to have a, uh, public hearing for it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Good to go.
Awesome.
Next up, uh, July fourth firework location. Dina.
Um, our July fourth fireworks, um, being my first one behind the scenes, um, this year, which was an eye-opening experience and much teamwork went into this event. Um, our main goal for any event is to have a community gathering place that promotes well-being and community bonding. Um, finding the perfect site is very challenging. Uh, site restrictions, first response, being able to get to a place quickly and efficiently. So that's our, always our main goal, um, in looking for an event site. After this past Fourth of July, um, statements were given to me and the staff that the first responders, um, had some issues. The site needed to be a more controlled site for emergency services, um, for logistics and to do their duties efficiently and, um, effectively. So we brought back the first responders, um, to different meetings and we looked at four different sites. Um, the current location is, um, off of Waxahau Parkway, behind CVS, across from Food Lion. The main concerns of this site is the gathering space is unsecure. The area is spread out through public and private properties. First responders are thinned out, um, through the location demands. The response times are compromised. With Highway sixteen, um, being developed in the next five years, we are looking at estimates of losing that site with the next three. The considered sites, we looked at Can Creek, Cutherson High School.
Just for matter of public record, the next five to ten years. I don't want anybody walking out of here thinking Highway sixteen is going to be done in five years. Just, okay?
Yes, sir. The considered sites were Can Creek, Cutherson High School, Nesbit and the Steeple Chase property where the Queen's Cups held. Locations that, um, did not live up to our needs were the Can Creek area and Nesbit Park. Both sites had space limitations, uh, first responder time, limited viewing, line of sight for firework viewers and neighborhood concerns and parking were our main concerns in those two sites. Runner-up, Cutherson High School, was a maybe on logistic planning, um, hundred percent capacity for viewing for line of sight. Um, fifty percent parking, so we'd have to extend parking out to neighboring areas and then shuttle some people in. The shot, the fireworks would be shot off in neighboring par- properties, um, not on the school property. And then the, um, school would be for the viewing and the event staging, so like the pre-party area. And there's also a map of the school there. Our ultimate site would be where the Queen's Cup Steeple Chase, um, property is at. It's the best option for logistics, a hundred percent capacity for viewing line of sight, seventy-five percent for parking capacity. Um, and then we extend to off-site parking, um, within Waxahau and shuttle in. The event space is already capable of having large assemblies there, um, and has that already worked out with their emergency services plan. Uh, and able to, um, bring in traffic and let out traffic at an easy pace. Both locations, um, is out of the town limits. The, we're asking and, um, informing the, the board and understanding that would you like to do joint and sharing, um, this community event with other surrounding communities? Cause that's the big question, cause it's outside of our, um, town limits. If yes, then, uh, we as staff will go to these property owners and present these options. If no, um, that the town acknowledges the, the limited time that we have to host the fireworks show at its current location.
Define limited time. If that's what's three or five years I'm hearing here, so this is not something we want to do before July or something we need to do before July?
Let me weigh in on that. I think the, uh, the question is, is if there is, uh, interest in, in having a continued discussions and looking outside. Then before we approach outside properties as a formal town request, we just need to make sure the board wants to, to move forward in that manner. Um, if you don't want it to move outside of town, then I think the reality is, is there is a end of date, time for, um, current location. And it's, it may not be related completely to the widening of sixteen. It could be related to additional development that occurs on Waxahau Parkway. And the cooperation of property owners, um, as that changes over time. So it, it could be, um, there's currently not a project there, but there could be in the future.
So describe the problem to us, chief, from first responder.
From first responder, we are limited, uh, as to what we can do. People, safety, both fire and police, um, when we bring that many cars in, we're almost gridlocked.
Chief, pull that mic up.
Can you hear me now? Um, to say the least of stuff that can happen when you got that much people funneled in to the middle of town. We've seen the news, you know, the arrests that we've made here lately. Greg and I, I mean, that's what's going through our mind when we're walking downtown in, in a crowd that big. Things that can happen, um, let alone, you know, he has to have a truck on one side of town as well as the other and, and all my officers are tied up on, on their different, uh, stations with, with traffic control. I've got one officer that's covering the whole town and, and to get from one side of the town to the other, he's got to go all the way around to get there. And then if he's in a situation where he needs backup, we're, we're limited as to how quickly we can get that there. So a- all around, whether it's, it's, it's officer safety, uh, fireman's safety or the public safety, there's definitely a safety concern there for us. And we've had several situations that have, that have happened. Thank God they've fallen in our favor, but there is some concern there.
How much direct cost do we expend on fireworks? Just the fireworks part, not the other two events?
Twelve-five.
Twelve-five, then?
For the fireworks themselves.
Just the fireworks themselves, then all the staff cost. I know police is in here for twelve hours, basically, so that's so twelve plus thirty K.
Plus public services.
Plus public services, plus parking rep.
Parking rep.
So we're, we're talking about
Close events.
Forty K for an event. Do you feel as an event team that there's a return on that? You don't have to answer that now, that's probably something we need to evaluate in context. Is there a return? Is it worth the risk? I mean, the easy question, not an easy question or not so easy question is, does the board have an appetite to talk to other people? We always have an appetite to talk, but I, I think we got to step back and look personally think, this is an event. You, you have two other events that day, so we're expending a considerable amount of, uh, people capital and dollar capital that day to community development. Where does this one fit in in, in that context? It's a different animal from ten years ago. You used to be able to see it from Harris Dieter and all up and down sixteen. Now you can't see it from anywhere but close in. That said, the other part of the public safety part, we have, for some other events, we have similar issues. Two years ago, you stood in the stage at the Christmas tree lighting saying, we've got gridlock down here and, and we got to be looking at all these, I think, I think.
Yeah.
Not the same, but I get what you're saying, in terms of your exposure, but.
I, I, the problem is they do such a great job of these events that we're bringing in people from outside of town. Um, and they just continually to grow and grow and grow. Um, so I mean, we're, we're going to have to decide what we're going to do with, with this and where we're going to have them, because that is a concern. And, and you can only have so many firemen, so many officers out there doing what they got to do to, to make these functions run smoothly and, and up till now, fortunately, they have. And they do, our event staff does an excellent job.
It's the officers that can't get the traffic through, that's the problem.
You're exactly right.
Dina, I have a question.
Richard Stewart, yeah.
Um, does the lot at CVS, do they charge anything for us to do that? So the Queen's, Queen's Cup or Steeple Chase, they probably would charge, so that, would that be an additional charge, do you know? On top of everything?
We haven't moved forward with any of the locations, just because we did not want to do that without y'all's permission.
I'm familiar with our, our independent celebration, but I'm not familiar with any of the other municipalities in our area. If they have fireworks or not, and maybe we would like to go as the. If they have fireworks or not, and maybe we would like to go as the Western Union County fireworks and eliminate others that just have one big one. Is that what you're asking for?
After?
Is there somebody in Wesley Chap, is there Wesley Chapel fireworks? Is there Mineral Springs fireworks, or they do it independently?
No, sir.
We're the only ones that do it?
They all come to ours.
They all, yes, sir. The, the main concern after the, the event was when the first responders came back and said, "Logistically, we need to talk about this." And it's because we had, it's just a sea of people and a sea of cars, and this current location is not a secure location. So that brought us to start brainstorming for secure locations that would work for our events. That was, that was my way of figuring out a way to keep it going, but making it so our first responders had, had what they need to help keep us safe.
But if we put it in another municipality, then that municipality should join in in the fee, correct? Or Union County, since it's going to be, if it would be at Cuthbertson, it'd be in the county, which would be Union County. So, that's where my thinking is, if we're going to do it not in our town, somebody else should kind of belly up to the bar, is what I'm saying.
And, I'm, we're asking your permission to go ask.
Yep. I completely understand the, the limitations on the current site. I agree with you, it's just not a good thing. I would lean more toward Cuthbertson than I would toward the Queen's Cup area, because you're, the Queen's Cup area is only served by a few small two-lane roads, whereas at least here, if the school system is amenable to it, you have Cuthbertson, you have Howie Mine, you, all, all the different places people can come and go. But I might even say that that's kind of a temporary thing too, for maybe three, four, or five years, because we'll probably outgrow that site. So, we need to be thinking, where can we go where we have an abundance of parking? Where can we go where we have roads intersecting? And that's a problem to, to solve, but I, I would prefer myself Cuthbertson for the next four, five years, whatever it takes.
I'd like to join in, I mean, amenities-wise, the Queen's Cup is got, is better. My biggest difficulty with that site is, number one, is it, it's really not Waxaw. I mean, it's Mineral Springs, I mean, it's that, and they're not the most admissible, ameni, amenable people to begin with. They'd be glad to take our fireworks away from us and us pay for it. Cuthbertson, I, I still think, I, I, personally, I, I, that seems limited to me, but it's worth looking at.
Right, and I see it as an interim kind of step.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I'm thinking is, is what I'm hearing at least from everybody that's spoken, that we're okay with giving Gina direction to explore all the options to the fullest, and then bring us back to presentation.
Sure. I'll, I'll be in the minority here. I would like to hear from the event staff, not today, but how does this fireworks event fit into our overall event strategy? And if it's highest priority, then that's great, then come back with a proposal, but if, if it's the third of three on the Fourth of July, you know, I, I, I love fireworks, my wife will kill me if, with the fireworks in, because she, she drags me out to them every time, because she loves them. I mean, people love them, I get that, but I would, as part of your event strategy, we're already overloaded. 26, 28 events. I, I'd love to hear from you where this fits into your overall. Give you the chance to say, instead of just forcing you to do it. That would be, I'd like to hear that. I don't know if you, if everybody agrees, but.
I would too, and, and I'm thinking, as you're explaining all of these things, when, when I hear $40,000 for one event, in my mind, I can think, where else could we use that $40,000 in Waxaw for everybody that lives in Waxaw, the taxpayers, rather than everyone coming in? As much as I love fireworks, I haven't missed one since they started, but that's a lot of money. And for, for one night, yeah, I'd like to hear that, those pieces as well.
Just be candid with us, just where, where you think it fits in. Would you also do me a favor? Would you go and tell the school system that we were, they were just tossing ideas around? I don't want them alarmed at this point in time.
No, I would, if you give me permission to touch base with them.
Yeah, well, please do.
Okay. Just for, so that helps our discussion with the staff. Would you be open to charging to come to an event?
So in the case of Steeple Chase, they charge for the Steeple Chase every year.
Yes, sir.
And folks are $5 a car to park. I mean, that right there, they got 75% of the capacity. I don't know what the capacity of vehicles they hold, but I would say minimal, probably five, 600 cars out there, that's 30 grand right there at $5 a car, so.
Recoup some of the cost?
Right, there are lots of options, and again, that's what my thought are. You give us the options of what you've explored and what you've found is just my pleasure.
I just want to make sure that's an okay option to explore.
Another option out there.
Yes, every option's open. We can always just say no, you know, but every option's open. Be creative.
Absolutely.
That might get scary. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, the, the question, the advice from you guys would be, how quick do you need to come back to us on? Because the Fourth of July, if we need to start setting the community up for some change, that may take some time, that's all I'm thinking of.
Yes, sir. You know, with some events, we, it actually takes a year to, to get them ready, and this is actually one of those events. So, I, I think it's getting to be too late to change it for this coming up year, just because of logistics of making it happen. But I'm, from one to, I'm a planner, so I need to know that we're looking forward and we're looking ahead, so we can have options for us that's going to meet the needs for our citizens. So, I think we're, we're safe unless some new development happens on Waxaw Parkway that I'm not aware of, happens in the next six months or so, we're okay for that site for this coming up year. But this is something I seriously think we need to think about and have a plan for.
2018, we're going ahead with what we have. This is 2019 and beyond?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, as, as far as development on Waxaw Parkway, we just move them farther up in that, mow off some more grass up on the other hill.
Other questions? Anything? Go ahead. Thank you. Are you presenting, who's presenting?
Okay, so Mr. Spelling was not able to come tonight to go over the committee's request. And, but I do have a committee member here, Ms. Claudia, that is here for backup if we have questions.
All right. Take it away.
Okay. Mr. Nick is hopefully going to get that slide up. Okay. Last spring, the board asked the Recreation Cultural Advisory Board to look at the public inventory for recreational opportunities, public and private, for Waxaw. And when I started in June, I found out about this request, and so over the summer, the committee has been working diligently on getting information about the HOAs and neighborhoods within Waxaw. So the map that you see that's up on the screen gives all the neighborhoods within Waxaw, and the circled areas are the areas that have no outlet for recreation. In your packet, you have two spreadsheets. One are town inventory, active and non-active, and then you have your HOA in schools on one of the spreadsheets. It basically lays out all the recreational offerings that private and public has to offer for Waxaw. And we saw as a committee, the areas in the red circles, there's no recreational given, and that's a major concern for us, which we already knew that we are wanting to build our park system and, and get those recreational needs met, but that was an eye-opening for us as the committee. So, your request in the springtime, this is giving back that information from the committee? Questions?
Comments, questions? I mean, it begs the obvious question or, or need, time to do, to update the master plan. Because the original did not even look at communities at all. And while we're top-heavy to the north, by design, in the planning that was done many, 10, 15 years ago, nonetheless, you do highlight some gaps. Not all of them are necessarily bad. Some of them were planned communities designed that way for a reason. They didn't want amenities, but nonetheless, we do have some gaps, especially to the south. And as you close in around 75.
Yes, sir.
Which is a challenge.
I just want to make sure that they, with this information given back, is, is there, does that meet your needs, your request from the springtime? Is there anything else that we need to work on?
Questions, comments?
Yes. Looking at the map, and having talked before, you see the two apparent clusters, one around the Oaks, Alma Village, and so forth, and the other on the south side of 75, and it just really, this is great, because it's, finally, here it is, you can see it as a picture. But I'm going to agree with Steve 100%, that I think it's time we engage a professional consulting firm to redo the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I don't seem to recall that that reflects what you've found. There's a lot of, you know, 10-acre pieces, 50-acre pieces, but not exactly where this is showing the greater needs.
The original master plan excluded inventories of homeowners association. By design, I mean, it just was an activity that was supposed to be taken on later. And you've now taken it on, thank you. What's everybody else think in, in terms of that?
I would like to make a comment about it. I, I knew this basically plant, map for years, and I've been talking about it for years, that we need pocket parks throughout these communities. And I think that's what we need to look at. We need to get some pocket parks in these ones that don't have amenities in it. Either, you know, a basketball court or playground equipment, just something small. It doesn't have to be large. And I, you know, we need to count in if there's any schools in the area that the kids can play in. We need to look at that too, I mean, that's.
And that's in the plan.
I know that's in the plan, but that's, you know, right now, everything below 12 Mile Creek has no amenities, pretty much. Is what I say.
I'm trying to get my hand around how this is, I mean, I see all these circles here, and I guess, for instance, down in my neighborhood, you know, Hillcrest, and a lot on the south of the tracks there, you know, we're going to have downtown park. Put a, put a line, that, there we are. That's going to serve Hillcrest. I mean, to me, that will be their recreational facility. And I guess what we need to do is pretty much pick out the dots where we think that we need to add. We'll feed all these, the circles surrounding them. And that's how I would start doing a survey of the, the, what our needs are, and where, where we need to target our, our.
Thus a master plan.
Correct.
Yeah, thus a master.
And that's basically what I'm saying too, because I'm looking at basically this area where we're sitting at. You know, you've got some large subdivisions and some smaller subdivisions that are just next to each other to get the downtown park, that's a ways to walk for a kid. Or ride a bike, and you have to have them ride down Highway 16? At least we got it approved they could ride on the sidewalk, but even where I live, there's not even sidewalks that connects to the downtown. So, that's really a problem. We have no place for our children to play. These kids.
Kind of get sidetracked, I'm looking at Preserve at, at Forest Creek, I mean, that, that's one road and a spur off of it, it's a huge piece of property and only one little street it developed. I mean, there isn't, there's nothing in there now. I mean, that I, oh, there is, there's a little park down at the end, a couple picnic tables, and that, that was what I'm concerned. They do have one, but, but they're only serving 30 houses, something like that, 20, 30 houses. You live there? And there's one little? But no streets have been built yet or anything yet. Correct. Okay. I, I, I speak and I hear. I can understand.
I think everybody knows how I feel about parks. I think when I look at all of these circles, I don't think there's any possible way we could ever put, be able to afford, to put a park in each one of these circle areas. But we do have large pieces of land that can be developed, the downtown and Waxaw Marvin, and some other areas over on South Providence that can, can serve a large community. I don't know that, even in the neighborhoods with some of the young people that I know, or with small children, they don't let their children walk to those parks that are in their neighborhood, they take them. So it's a get in the car and let's go, until they're maybe teenagers. So to have a large community park, I think would serve the town much better to have two or three of those and to keep our inventory intact until we can do that.
The, the reason why we did the map is so you can see where the pockets were and the understanding of we need to reevaluate the master plan to give that connectivity to those large parklands.
So what's the consensus?
I would go and update the master plan. If I'm good with that.
Is the master plan, that, is that something that you would be helping with, the consultant or the consultant is, is going to do that?
And you can do it two ways. A consultant usually comes in and you give them all the information, and they bring it together, because there's other studies involved that I wouldn't have access to. So we would bring in someone to help with that. There's a, an inexpensive way of doing it of just updating what we have and doing our best with our staff internally. That might take a little bit longer, just because of you're finding all those pieces. But it's, it's time to update it. Our, our town's changed so much in the last five years alone. It, it just doesn't, it doesn't give us a clear picture to move forward and, and gives where those pockets need to really be for those larger, larger pieces of land.
So you would bring back a proposal to, to us at a future meeting?
Yes, sir.
Would this expenditure come in this year or would be for possibly next year if we decide? if we decide to move forward with it?
I can put the numbers together and then y'all can decide when it, when would you like to do it?
We've, we'd push parks off long enough.
Yeah, we need to do it now. We need to do it yesterday, in my opinion.
And it's, um, we've had a lot of different pieces, they're now starting to come together. We should just, let's move and move quickly. And if, if that means that we have to reallocate funds, that comes back to the board for decision-making, but.
We'll bring two proposals to you. One will be more of the internally driven and the other would be more of an externally, but with staff's involvement. And there'll be pros and cons. Of course, the external's going to be more costly, internal may be a little slower, but there may be ways to speed up the internal that we'll talk about.
Okay.
And just, I heard what you said there, neither one of them mentioned citizen input. Is that part of it also?
Absolutely, either process.
Okay. I'd like to say just, you know, when I came on board four years ago, the, the Parks and Recreation Plan, you know, which is this thick and this big, it's massive. And we were, you know, we're, we're still so far back, I mean, we're at ten percent where we should be or some outrageous number. But the fact is, I think one thing, it, it's so massive, that's why we can't really get our hands around where do we put the first step? I mean, which is what it is, it's just a matter of where, where do we go first with all this and put the jigsaw puzzle together? I mean, if you can make it simpler, it would be a lot easier. I mean, and not as much boilerplate, tell us what to do.
A working document.
Right. The other challenge of the old, of the current plan, I guess you call it the old plan, was there was two fundamental, uh, anchor points. A relationship with the Museum of the Waxahol, which has taken a little bit of time to pull together, and a relationship with the YMCA, which is now actually being, is defined and, and starting to move forward. But those were two anchors that everything else in that master plan was dependent upon. So it was kind of a catch twenty-two and, and so by default, it's behind. So, all right, very good, thank you.
Awesome. Um, our next item from the request from the Park and Rec Committee is to combine, we're asking for permission to combine the art policy and art plan to make a, um, clear working plan for the future proj- uh, projects. So we're asking for permission to work on these documents to, um, to make it easier to implement.
That process was done last year and it was not accepted. Are you talking about taking that, that document and using that or starting all over and wasting more money to, to put it, to do it all over again?
I would look at all the documents and, um, and pick the pros and cons and then bring it back to y'all to, to get the okay.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Are you going to basically absorb the art policy into the art plan? Is that what the intent is? Because it's two separate entities, one's basically like, I don't know, comprehensive plan, the other one's a U D O, it's kind of two different entities. But if you're going to try to combine them together, and how much change are you going to do from the art plan? Because our plan's pretty, pretty much defined.
I have not moved forward on looking at doing either one because I wanted to get y'all's permission to even consider it.
Well, it was recommended in the art plan to be looked at every five years, and this is the fifth year. And it's time for us to look at it. I was on the beautification committee and I was the chair at the time when we put it in action. We do need to look at the art plan. I would recommend to take the art plan, it's more developed than the art policy, and try to roll the policy into the plan, which, that's how the, the plan was based on. It was like, you have a foundation, now we build the house. And then look at that, but I, it has pretty much defined values in it, and I wouldn't throw the whole thing out wholesale because it was a pretty good plan. It, it won a state award that we were pretty proud of to, uh, and we, we funded the thing. It was nineteen thousand dollars, I can tell you that's what it was. And the person that actually put it together, I would recommend you contacting her because she did a fantastic job and she's well-known in the state.
So, and I, I may be a minority here, five years ago, dramatically different time, lots of things going on across this country, and I would sincerely like to see staff and/or experts take a look at where we are, uh, society-wise, and how our public display of art banners, et cetera, really fits into where society has moved forward to. I'm not trying to be a downer, I'm just trying to be a realist here, and, and it's, we need to look at things like that now.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with you taking a look at it, perhaps reviewing it with the manager. Uh, I think when it came up the last time, and as Commissioner Byrne said, it probably expended a lot of time, a lot of energy and some funds, and we didn't get anywhere. But I think that was probably, there were a lot of individual agendas working on that. But now we have a professional director, we have a manager, uh, I'd love to hear your recommendation.
Just for clarification, I think what's being discussed is really an internal review of that process, and, and we would not have a external, uh, cost of a consultant, it'd be done internally. It would probably be sometime in the spring before there'd be a document that would come back for some discussion and recommendation. So, um, i- if that's the direction that the board decides to go, what I would recommend you do is, um, allow the two, the plan and the policy to really be kind of put in some sort of hiatus so that we don't get into a position of saying that something's not consistent with it, and then at the same time, we're reviewing it for, for changes. So, um, if there's something that would generate controversy, we certainly would look to the board before that hit the street, but, um, there are certain things like the tap grant as we move forward that might need to incorporate some artistic elements into it, but before we get into a situation where, uh, controversy happens, we want to make sure that we are careful and measured on how we approach those things.
Pretty comfortable with that?
Yes.
You're excused.
Thank you.
Main Street Advisory Board update, Neil?
Oh, I'm in stereo here. Mayor, Councilman, Chief, everybody else, thank you very much for the time here. I have to tell you, um, our group has been one of the busiest groups you have ever seen working on this, uh, on this over this past year, and we've got a couple things to show you. We need direction and we've got some really great ideas of what we need for your help to do then, so. All right, what's going to be presented? Is it going to be a review of what we've been doing, uh, for this on the three work plans that we've been working on for the past year? We've got a recommendation based on research and stakeholder, stakeholder conversations then. And then what we're asking of you then is the board for directions on next steps, as well as, uh, hopefully some funding to be able to do some things. So the background on this is that, uh, we got a change from the B O C to challenge us then, and that was to push the commissioners. We were asked to come back with things that would scare you guys, and I don't think we want to scare you, but at the same time, we have some really, really good, well-founded thoughts and ideas that we really want you to all to take a very serious think about this then and be able to make sure that we can show you about how this is going to really work for the town then. In the almost one-year research, the M S A has now put out forward a recommendation that does that. We reviewed existing plans like the downtown vision plans, we have studied best practices, we have visited with communities, we have interfaced with local stakeholders. What we present today is the possibility to pursue a path that will position downtown Waxahol as the cultural hub and destination of Western Union County. Now, what we are was we're looking for requests and direction. We were not given, uh, to come up with a budget or with a proposal or et cetera like that. If we had been done that, we'd been doing, we'd be way ahead of you guys then. But our, our purpose was to identify a strategy for use, maintenance, and sale of real estate in downtown. So this was our downtown vision then, I'm not going to read it then, but everybody knows about it, this, that is, we were really wanting to make this a, a hub for diverse retail shops, award-winning eatery and eating and drinking establishments, make a total advantage of the local artisans and the cultural events that are going on around in Waxahol then. So we have three work plan, plans that we looked at through all the various different documents and studies that this town has done over the past five years, and we have identified three areas that we actually had to work with. Uh, the first one was we were going to serve and convene stakeholders for tap grant improvements, and that was basically meeting with more or less the, uh, the downtown business owners to be able to understand and make them sure that, sorry, um, about what's coming, getting their input on things about what we could do, what we can make, uh, better, or even some better ideas that weren't even included in the plan. The next item was determine the role of the Waxahol Farmers Market downtown. Where the farmers market is right now, nobody sees it from the, from the street. Everybody hears about it, but it's very, very hard to see. We need to put this into a place where people can be able to see it, go to it, and use this as a jump-off point for other things that we can be able to do. And the last item was to identify the long-term strata, strategy for the use, maintenance, and sale of downtown-owned real estate then.
Why do we need to see the farmers market? They're very successful.
Let me show you.
Okay.
Patience is a virtue, have it if you can, sometimes in a woman, but never in a man. The nice thing as we were going through all.
If I wasn't on public record, I'd have another comment.
Oh, I'm sure. My, my Irish, my Irish mother always told that to us then, so. But we found out as we were doing the work that all three of these work plans came together in a very most unique way then. In June of this year, we had a series of business owners' meetings. So we convened over at the brewery and we talked about a number of different things about, we looked at what the tap grant was offering, what we were doing with a couple other things then, and getting a couple ideas then. We know that there's need for a side, a crosswalk at Highway sixteen and the water tower lot, or is that water tank lot? And noted sidewalks for along the water, water tank area as well then, too. But we just didn't research this stuff. We actually sat down and we talked with people to get their ideas. We took the notes that we had from these various different studies and then be able to put them into, uh, realty. And then we had, uh, Grisham Smith and Partners Field Audit, they came out on August twenty-third. They had a bunch of really nice guys that understand the entire concept of what we were trying to do with the tap grant then. We did a complete walk through the area then. We noted for the pedestrian landing at the water tower lot, we noted for opportunities to develop landscape elements and support future land use as a gathering area, and noted the possibility of one-way streets, wider sidewalks, and more parking along West North Main Street and East North Main Street as well then, too.
Curiosity question probably to you, Kurt. That audit was a broader audit for the entire tap grant?
Yes. And more is coming in the coming weeks about that, we'll explain in a couple minutes. Uh, we've had extensive meetings with market to understand needs, a high vis- visibility for the farmers market, a permanent coverage structure then. And then looking at the even downtown vision plan, it does call this out, uh, for, at N S six, position regularly hosted events as the weekly farmers market in a high visibility area. The current farmer's market location is not visible to traffic. To grow the farmers market, in- integrating the market with other regular events into the permanent fabric of downtown is critical to the success of the area. From a strategic perspective, a well-located farmers market can build other local businesses. And this is just not stuff that we came up with, this is stuff that came right out of your, uh, your manuals, and also is stuff that we've been talking with other towns of what they've been able to do. The economic potential is the farmers market is, uh, returns three times as much of their sales to the local economy versus chain stores do. Markets are small business incubators as well, look at Sepesco Coffee and how suc- successful they become then. So talking about the town-owned real estate, uh, back in March, uh, they had the Main Street Conference up in Shelby, and they had a number of, of fantastic speakers. And one of them was, uh, Mayor Knox White from Greenville, South Carolina, who really put something together that has been, uh, something that we've all been thinking about, find your waterfall. Find something that's going to be a draw for people to come down to there. And we'll show you the picture of downtown Greenville then, but Greenville has this incredible natural waterfall that's right in the center of town, and they just built out around it with parks, recreation, other things of that nature then. The Main Street Advisory Board aimed to achieve full use, infill, and occupancy of the downtown district then, utilize the town of Waxahol's downtown properties as an asset to downtown envelop, development. And I want to stress this, this is about the downtown area then, and downtown and the property that is owned by the town in the Main Street area then. There is other property outside of the Main Street area that the town actually owns that is not in the scope of our work that we were doing then. And taking a look at the vision plan again, C one-one. Uh, when correctly sized, civic buildings create an image for the community, instill pride in the citizens, form high-quality urban spaces for community use, increase the sale of adjacent properties, and stimulate private investment in adjacent sites. Take advantage of local locations and high visibility within the community. Use civic investments in ways that anchor neighborhoods or town districts. Just a quick map to show you exactly where we are. We're, uh, this is about a, uh, the circle is about a one-quarter mile walking radiance from the town. And that little red, little area then is exactly where the water tower and that, uh, that big lot is located right now, almost in the men, the very center of town. This is what the city of Greenville has. We don't have, we don't have waterfall, but they were able to show us and be able to, give us an idea about what is going to be the drawing factor for people to come down here then. So our, a, what we've come up with is a new town center anchored by a multi-use building supported by the Niven Price Parking Lot, Duncan McDonald House, and the Water Tower as well. And this is the areas that we're talking about then, this is town-owned property then, and being able to utilize this as much as possible then. We have a great parking lot already there, we just need to make sure people know how to get there. We've got the, uh, the McDonald House then, which has been fantastically restored. We've got the water tower, which is a fantastic beacon that everybody knows where it is. And we've got that big lot that's just sitting there, just waiting to be used. We've heard some from, from some, uh, business owners that they would love to turn that into a parking lot. Not really a great use of that, uh, building whatsoever then. So this is what we're taking a look at about doing here in the coming, uh, our suggestions is first of all, to subdivide the parking lot, pave it and stripe it to be able to make it, uh, much more efficient use of that parking lot then. We'd like to make sure that our hardsc- uh, hardscape and perhaps a stage that'll be actually used on there. And then we're looking at a forty-five-hundred square foot structure with vendor areas tables that can be multi-used, not only for the farmers market, but for other things as well then, too. Got a couple examples here is what we're showing here. This is Spanish word Alabama about, they've, they've got this in the center of their town, and it's a fantastic place where people can come, hear concerts during the summertime, be able to be used for multiple things as well then, too. Pearlant, Texas has got a really great location that they also use as a transportation center, and they close it off and they have incredible events that go on there every single year. What we have here is a rendition by Ron Zimmerman, who is a fantastic artist and gave us a really neat idea about why can't we utilize the idea of the train system, uh, the train that runs through here and be able to look something that was, came out of the eighteen-nineties to be able to use this, to be able to be something that can be also brought up, be, in, into the twenty-first century with modern conveniences at the same time. We have the outside look of what was the, in the eighteen-nineties, but we have the inside look of the, uh, of two thousand seventeen then. So an anchor is a true center for downtown, provides outstanding impression for, uh, first impression for Waxahol then. It's to secure and increase parking at the Niven Price Building then, better leverage of the Duncan McDonald House, the Water Tower area, and the existing town assets that we've already got, own the land ends, all contiguous then. And provide space for art festivals, events, concerts, corporate gatherings, weddings, the farmers market, et cetera, et cetera then. But this is not to replace the downtown park, the park is a park, this is a town center, gathering place. Know that many events are already happening here, so the people are already gathering here, let's take advantage of that then. So, timing and funding. So right now, we are coordinated with the tap grant improvements. We've had, uh, some fantastic, uh, conversations with the, uh, the group that's actually going to be managing it. They'll be having, uh, several meetings coming up over the, uh, next couple of weeks then, where we can get comp, uh, uh, input from the community then and be able to really make sure that this is what's going on then. What we're looking to see about getting out of it is that the tap grant that we have is probably going to not cover all the things that we would like to see down here then, but we would like to be able to see a list that we can be able to see what's going to be the biggest bang for our buck, and then be, be able to turn it over to the town Waxahol and say, okay, this is next on the list that we can be able to do, that we can either save money or, uh, put funding towards this then. The Niven Price Building, we're suggesting to facilitate the sale, minus the parking lot, to a private developer. Current tenants will remain on an existing eighteen-month. Current tenants will remain on an existing 18-month lease. So possible next steps is, we'd like to be able to work on the conceptual site plan and the architectural drawings and engagement of the consultant to be able to help us do this the proper way then. Contract the UNC Development Finance Institute or other consultant about the Niven Price building then. Interface with the tap grant engineers to build the improvements that would support this use, and then also explore project funding sources then. One consultant for a site plan, architectural or consultant like DFI for the Niven Price building. DFI is approximately $20,000, given range about $15,000 to $30,000 for consultant as well then, too. So basically, just repeating here is what the Board of Commissioners Strategic Initiatives, we were, wanted to be able to follow as well as our overall downtown vision then. So in conclusion, this is what we presented. A review of what we've been doing for this past year then. A recommendation based on research and stakeholder conversation. And what we're asking for, forward a direction on steps, and what we're really asking for is to be able to make sure that we have money, that we can identify an architect to be able to help us put what we're planning to do with this. As we said, all three areas are coming to interface with each other. The tap grant to help us with the, the crosswalks and the proper lights around that area then. We have the town property already here, and we've got a fantastic use for that town property then, too. So that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much, because I'm really pleased with the sort of holistic approach to the downtown, the tap grant, the surveys, the proposed structure, the reusing of the Niven's Price building. I, for one, am in favor of it, and I would like to see funding put in place to continue this.
Thank you.
I've lived downtown for 26 years on Main Street, and, and I've looked at this and studied this. And I, I have to disagree with you on the parking, putting a permanent structure on the corner would eliminate any parking there in between events, or even if a farmers market, a pop-up farmers market was there, if there's a permanent structure, that takes an awful lot of parking away. And I know there's a parking problem downtown because I have people parking in front of my house when there's events, all the way down, down by the street. So I, I don't know that I would, I don't agree with putting a permanent structure there.
I would also counter it. Wait until you see what happens with the tap grant and what we're proposing with the tap grant. By rerouting a couple of streets, we can increase parking tenfold by what we can do.
So is that what you're talking about making, making, hold on?
Yeah.
Making West North Main partially there downtown in one way?
That is-
And I disagree with that completely as well.
Well, that's why we're waiting, we're talking with the, the groups to be able to do the proper research for us then about that then. But the estimates that we're looking at then, we could actually increase parking along the street very quickly and very easily.
Okay, well, let me, let me finish, please. Moving on down to the, the property that the town owns, the buildings that they own that are leased now. I know that that's, you're advising and giving us your, your ideas, but I think that's a board issue completely as far as sale of property. But back to your idea, is the sale of the property proceeds that would come with that is what you're thinking would, you would use to do some of these other things?
That is entirely up to the board. We were tasked to be able to look at what we could do with the property that's owned by the town in, in the Main Street area then. And this is what we have come, this is our conclusion after looking at a number of different scenarios then.
Have you looked at the scenario of a, when the downtown park, because that's in part of your boundary, correct?
Not really, no.
The downtown park isn't? It was in the boundary, wasn't it, Kurt? In the Main Street?
The boundary does. The boundary is, but not the park itself. We go along, right along the boundary of the park.
No, I thought the park-
It wasn't, but we brought it in.
I, I was under the impression that the park was part of that Main Street boundary.
So just to, to clarify, when, when we're talking, when we're saying downtown park, do we mean the future downtown park, David G. Barnes Park? The, the line is drawn to incorporate the future downtown park.
The 10 acres or plus or minus?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought. So my question is, have you looked at the possibility of when that park incorporating the farmers market there? Because I've been, of course, it would be nice to have it in the middle of town, but it doesn't have to be. You have a farmers market, you let everybody know where it is, they'll come. If they're farmer-market people, they're going to come, they're going to find it. There's more parking there, there's, it saves the parking for events on the corner. That's just kind of my, my thought on that. Have you looked or thought about that?
We have looked at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So first of all, you guys have done a lot of work, so kudos to everybody that's worked on this. Really do appreciate it. I think, and this I'll direct to you, Greg, I'm hearing things that I haven't heard before in terms of the tap grant. It might be a, a time to update the board in terms of where is the tap grant that was, I'm hearing street redesign, but the tap grant was about walkability and stuff. It might be a good time to get the board one update on where we are with that and, and the like. I don't, at some point in time in the near future, because from what it sounds like, the tap grant's going to solve everything downtown right now. And, and that, I know that that is only $1.1 million, so-
It will help, but it won't solve everything.
But it, it's coming across that way out in the community, and that, that's my concern, that everybody thinks we're doing all this stuff, and the tap grant's going to pay for everything. And we just need to make sure we set expectations properly, and that's an understanding. What I see in what you've done is kind of a hybrid off of the, the original downtown vision plan. I, I do know back in 2014, when we were looking at real estate, that was kind of the thought process of, of why these real estate pieces were bought. So I understand where, where you're headed. Greg, maybe what would help, I, I'm struggling with, how do we get this into some workable view? Because this is, this is a five-to-seven-year plan. I, I mean, when you look at all the piece parts here. And I'm not clear in my mind where to start. Obviously, we got to get PCNR engaged because we're, we're saying that the corner lot could use it. The pavilion in the corner lot only covers the front. What about the backside? How do we start pulling all this stuff to take this out of great work and, and enable it maybe a, a little bit deeper look so we can see what's feasible and when we could even afford to, to fund it? Because it, there's a lot of work here, but there's a lot of money that here as well. And I don't think it's prudent for us as a, as a board to start funding concepts if we don't know where we're going here. We, we got to begin with an end in mind. They've created a great vision. Now, now we got to really figure out how we're going to get there. And do you have any thoughts or?
Yes, I, I think the concept that was presented tonight is something that the staff needs to take time to absorb and understand, the, the images, at least for the, the sizes, I think, or something that we have just heard today or yesterday. We need to look at that, and then the positioning on the light of the building or structure. We need to be thoughtful about that. One thing that I have very little knowledge of is what the current utility situation is in the downtown area, particularly on the North Main Street side, and how the buildings are served that are there. Historic structures with water, sewer, and gas. Often, parking areas contain those utilities. And so I think we need to go back and do a pretty good review of how those buildings are served, and whether there's a structure there or hardscape or parking. If there are changes in utilities that need to be made, now would be the time to do that versus putting up permanent structures or semi-permanent structures. So that, that should be coordinated. That is not part of the tap grant scope as I understand it, but that might be something that we could review internally to see what resources we have in place about cost, about how utilities are served that would help inform us as to how this could move forward. But I think we're, we're in a position of needing to do a little bit more research on that.
At the staff level? Okay.
I would like to say I'm in agreeance with both you gentlemen, that we need to do some more research, because when we were looking at it to build the town hall there, it was going to be a million dollars to fix that dirt, to put a town hall there. Because we got three foundations in the front, okay? We have a mule barn that was on the corner of Duncan McDonald House, Duncan, Duncan, or McDonald Street and Highway 16. You know there's a bad dirt there. I mean, and we were going to bring in all the utilities underground because we were going to take up the whole block. Because if we took up that whole block, you'd never get utilities in there again. We talked about that going to the conference. And all the, all the buildings on North Main Street have a septic tank with an overflow system going, feeding into the sewer lines. So actually, they have a septic tank that has overflow into the sewer so that it's a brown water. It actually sits in a septic tank, and whatever flows over. So you got to look at that, too, because I mean, you can't build on top of a septic There is, and I'm not against this, because I, I would love to see the farmers market put there, because I think that's where it should be. That's the heart of the community. It promotes healthy, well-being living. I, I know it causes some parking issues. If you put it down in the downtown park, it's off the beaten path where it is now, off the beaten path. To me, I think that's just a logical sense that, but I don't think we can really do that until we really get that downtown park so we can have, facilitate our community events in that downtown park, in my opinion. So it's kind of a staging issue. And we need to look at it, but we need to absorb this information. And before we expend a bunch of money having outside services come in, I think we should take a look at it ourselves internally and then figure it out if it's worth the expense.
You basically have come up with a very nice concept. Thank you again. And now we're in the feasibility stage.
Exactly.
And we need to examine all the pros and cons and problems and identify them before charging out and making some big mistakes. So you're in feasibility now, and it's a normal second step during any kind of development.
So there's a couple of tactical questions, though. What, what's time-dependent here? Farmers market, you know, is there lease expiring? Is there any reason why we couldn't move ahead with enhancing the parking at Niven's Price? Is there a pro and con there? I mean, are there some things in here, and you don't have to answer now, but are there some things in here that we could move on tactically that will not jeopardize anything but will improve downtown tomorrow, if we did them tomorrow? Kind of thing?
I can tell you the one thing is the tap grant and the changing of the sidewalks and trying to make the sidewalks a little bit easier and crosswalks then. So, but that will be all next year.
Yep.
Planning here, but then the next year will be construction then, so. But as to the other items, I would really suggest that we go back and do some additional research and talk to you then, so.
That'd be great.
Did you want to add something?
Well, yeah.
Well, the farmers market, we are always on lease with Stewarts, and so we lease the land, so anything that happens there, it's, it's always a big question mark.
Okay.
Would the farmers market move? Yes. Would we be able to move and have new vendors, new people, and, and yes, we could do that. We could do it in a relatively quick way.
Okay.
For goodness sake.
Efficient.
Tim, did you want to add something?
I did. We mentioned the Niven Price building. One of the things we talked about is whether or not the town has an appetite to own all of the Niven's Price. It's sort of, it's always been my understanding that the purchase was maybe one of the key items was to gain the parking lot.
Right.
So to move forward, one of the things we maybe want to consider doing is getting a survey, separating-
Excuse me just a minute. Can you come forward, because they're not catching your audio? Thank you.
One of the things we might move forward on is, is considering getting a survey done of that site and separating the building from the parking lot so that in the future, if you decide to retain the, the building, it's separated out, or if you want to sell the building, then, you know, you're ready to do that, so.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I would like to point out that, yeah, there's already been a design for that parking lot back there, you know that, that was with the town hall. I mean, and it, we, we should have proceeded with it four years ago, but the price tag was just too big. It's functioning now. We do want to pave it. We will get a lot more cars in there if we pave it and stripe it and put curbs on.
Which parking lot?
Behind the Niven Price building.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
What other one was there?
Well, we've talked about parking on the corner lot.
Oh, yeah, well, to me, that should be a park. I mean, or as you, you're suggesting shelters. I, I have some, I have some, building shelters and too much on that property. That, that property is limited in size and, and, you know, the access to it, there's, making it very functional, in my opinion. This is my opinion, so a designer can maybe do a better job. It's going to be limited. I don't, I'm not sure how many people and people, and events and other things you can get on that property. It's just not that big.
Any other comments, questions? Been to Greenville. Your, your analogy is perfect. I mean, beautiful. If we can do that, or something similar, obviously, not quite that big. When staff looks at it, Greg, I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume, when you look at it, there's a, there's a, not only the financial part, but the, the whole operational and business side, because if you add all of that to, as they claim, they talk about events, concerts, farmers market, space gathering, that says staff's got to be up to support that as well as the downtown park. Not that you can gauge it now, but I'm, I'm assuming we'll start to have to look at that, those kind of things as well, the overall impact of, of doing this.
Yeah, just as a comment, I think the first step for staff is really to start an inventory of what's been done in the past that relates to the, the properties in question. So the, the study on the parking lot completion behind Niven's Price and what those cost assumptions were, what that looked like, how that would kind of function. And we could start to get to what are the operational impacts of that. A second piece would be the, the site work that we, was, that was referenced earlier as to if town hall had been built on the water tank lot, how that would function, what the costs were for preparing that to get it to site-ready, and, you know, how relevant are those costs now? What can we determine about the utility service and how those are served? I think as, as much information as we can gather, we can put that in inventory format and get that to the board, have the board take a look at that, and then we'll start kind of building a, a fact sheet about what we do know, you know, some, some absolutes that we do know this, we do know utility information. And I think that might help inform this decision moving forward, because i- if the site costs to clean it up and get it ready to go, or a million dollars, that might preclude other uses in the future. But we also need to understand what we could or should do now if there's improvements made on the site. So you really wouldn't want to make any improvements on the site if, in fact, one day somebody might have to come back and tear up something to fix the utilities. So I think that's just where, I would recommend we go, is just take a small amount of time to try to get the inventory together of what we do know, and then we can come back and present that to the board and then have some discussion.
Main Street Board, that makes sense?
It makes perfect sense.
Okay. Very good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
All right.